Plano City Council Preliminary Open Meeting has reconvened into open session and all council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Grady and Councilmember Holmer. Our first item is the preliminary agenda, this is consideration and action resulting from the executive session, there being none. Our next item is Comprehensive Monthly Financial Report, December 21.
First, 2021 Comprehensive Monthly Financial Report. All right, so this slide represents our revenues compared to our budget by fund. The General Fund has revenues of 93.4 million for the first quarter of the fiscal year. This represents 31.9% of the total annual re-estimated budget, and the reason it's not right at 25% is because we do start collecting those ad valorem taxes in December. The Water and Sewer Fund has 45 million in revenues, and that represents 25.3% of the total annual re-estimated budget, so it's tracking right on time. This slide represents our expenditures compared to budget by fund. The General Fund has expenditures of 70.7 million for the first quarter, that's about 24.1% of the total budget, so it's tracking very well. The Water and Sewer Fund has expenditures of 28.7 million, and that represents 20.3% of the total annual budget. So this slide represents our net change in fund balance for the past three years. In the General Fund, for the first quarter of the fiscal year, the fund balance has increased by $13 million. The Water and Sewer Fund balance has increased by 6.1 million. That's better positioned than we were in the prior year, and of course, that's because we've turned back on the late fees and the late fees and stuff from coming out of the pandemic. The Environmental Waste Services Fund has decreased by 2.5 million, and Municipal Drainage Fund has increased by 56,000. Here we have our General Fund revenues, they're higher than the prior year by 3.4 million dollars. There was a decrease in property taxes by 3.2 million dollars, but that's just going to be a timing issue, that is, you know, they're technically not due until January 31st, so we just didn't collect as many in December, as much in December as we have in January of that. So that'll recover in the next Comprehensive Monthly Financial Report when you see it. Also, our sales tax is recovering nicely, it has increased $4 million over the prior year. There was also an increase in building permit revenue of $1.5 million. So our General Fund expenditures are higher than the prior year by 10.5 million. Personnel costs increased by 1.2 million, that's due to a 3% across-the-board salary adjustment that was effective in October of 2021. Last year, our personnel costs were offset by a reimbursement against expenditures of 9.3 million with the CARES funding that we received. Our Health Claims Fund had a decrease in fund balance of about 4.6 million. This is mostly due to the increase from people putting off exams, so as they're starting to go back to the doctor, as we're coming out of the pandemic, we've seen a very large increase in our claims. We also had a lot of large claimants. The fund balance has a current fund balance of $11.9 million. This isn't quite where we want it to be, we like our policy to be, to keep six months worth of claims, plus our IBNR in our fund balance. So, our plan is to increase our employer contributions, starting this month, and then we will look at our plan design and determine what kind of employee premium increases may be necessary in the future, and we haven't increased premiums in over 10 years. Here we have unemployment rates. In September, we're at 3.8%, and those decreased in December to 3.1%. Sales tax for the month of January was up compared to the prior year by 27.51%. We're finally seeing all that recovery in the sales tax number, so it's very good news. The real estate market recap shows the number of days on the market was 20 days in September compared to 22 in December, so December had a slight uptick in number of days on market. The percent asking was 102% in September, however, that did increase to 103% in December. We're still seeing well over that 100%, so the market's pretty robust there. The average selling price for a home in Plano in September was around 534,000, that has increased to 536,000 in December. The price per square foot in December rose to $198, and that compares to 191 in September. Okay, our hotel occupancy tax is up by 1.3 million compared to the prior fiscal year. This industry has slowly been recovering from the pandemic. And our equity and treasury pool, this basically shows you where we're keeping all of our funds. Our enterprise funds have 19% of this equity, and also, the largest share of the equity is always capital projects, that's where we put our bond fund money in, and that's at 33%. General Fund is at 12%. This is our investment portfolio maturities, as always, this is a very colorful slide because we are very diversified, or we're very good about moving out our maturity dates, so they're not all coming due at the same time, so. And then, here's our diversity of our portfolio, as you can see, we are even more colorful in that chart, because we are very diversified. The Public Funds Investment Act will not let us have over 50% in any one type of investment, and so we really watch that. And that is my presentation, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mayor Protem?
Did I hear you correctly, you said you haven't increased health premiums for employees in 10 years?
That's correct.
I guess I'm just wondering how you've been able to do that.
We have, we have had a very healthy fund balance, we've been very cautious with keeping that fund balance like that, because, and so we've been able to manage with plan design to keep those claims, it's just the pandemic just wiped us out, but yeah, we've just been really cautious with it, and had a good, a good fund balance, so we've been able to maintain that.
But Mayor Protem, to your point, the claims history over the last two years have caught up with us, so it's going to be a different year and a different discussion this year, as far as what the Health Claims Fund is going to look like, but some of those aspects of changing our TPA, changing our plan design, have helped over the last five or six years to really help mitigate some of those costs, but this year, a lot of that has caught up with us over COVID, and so we'll be having some different discussions this year to see what we can do, and how those costs need to be shared as part of the budget process.
Thank you.
Thanks Denise.
You're welcome.
Our next item is Department Report of Technology Services. Roger?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Management. My name is Roger Wright, I'm the Director of Technology Services, and I started with the city in July of 2020, a very interesting time to start a new job, and it's been interesting ever since. So, give you a quick overview of Technology Services. Starting with the org chart, and as far as for the org chart goes, we are made up of three divisions, and I'm thinking I should have wore my glasses. Those three divisions are, I'm going to do this from my head, because I can't see a thing. From Infrastructure Services, and that is headed by Jeremiah Lancaster, and the Applications Development Team, which is John Leibarger, Technology Officer in that area, and Information Security, which is Gus Duran. And the Information Security position is one that we elevated last year so that we could give additional focus to the cybersecurity needs, especially with everything going on in the world. It used to be combined with our architecture piece, and I believe that there needs to be a level of separation in that, so that we have autonomy and checks and balances in that place. Infrastructure is made up of our network and our communications, which includes telecom, as well as our servers and our systems and our support functions, desktop support and those items, along with radio. Radio for us is a regional radio system, and we'll talk more about that later. For Applications Development, it is our commercial off-the-shelf software, the things that we give to the departments to run their functions, and make them, to basically enable them to meet the needs of our citizens. And then there is the component of the business intelligence, as well as the GIS, which is a lot of our mapping solutions, and then custom development, which includes all the work that we do with integrations. We do that in a very sparing way, because as a city, there's so many solutions out there that meet our needs, we only want to do custom development when it makes sense to close a gap between different capabilities. We, when I got to the city, the city had done some significant investment in working with a consulting company to do an assessment of our capabilities, the services that we provide, how we provide those services, and what our gaps and things are, leading to a strategic plan. That was extremely beneficial to me coming into the city, it gave me a very good picture, and gave me a lot of content to drive a strategy. I've been working very closely with my team to meet with all of the departments, we meet with them, most of them quarterly, to understand what their needs are, what the gaps are in our services, and understand how we're providing those services. And then, we also did a lot of working sessions to understand what it is we should be doing, and then leveraging that consulting work, my team has come out with a roadmap of our own strategic plan. You'll see a lot of that through this presentation. First thing we did was we came up with, what every organization does, a vision and a mission, and that is to be the best technology leader in the local government community while enabling our organization to exceed the service expectations of our customers. Those are the citizens, the businesses, and the visitors. Through the innovative and cost-effective use of technology. To further refine that, provide quality technology support, consultation, reliable solutions, to address the requirements of city departments, enabling them to better serve Plano's residents. I know I read that to you, but what I want to do is point out that there's some key phrases in that, and that's consultative. We do not want to be a break-fix organization, we do want to fix everything that's broken, but we want to provide consultative solutions to enable the departments to serve the citizens. We are all, everything in technology should be about a customer, it doesn't matter what we're doing. One of the things that we wanted to do was talk about how we align to the city's strategy. Now, Technology Services is a little bit of a different animal. We very seldom engage directly with customers that are the citizens and the things that they expect as products and services from the city. I use an analogy with my team, that we are like the tracks that the trains run on. The departments, whether it's neighborhood services, or planning, or engineering, or libraries, they're the cars on the track, they're the ones that are actually delivering the payload of goods and services. My job is to make sure that those tracks allow them to do that effectively and efficiently into every place that they need to do. But we still do align, and you can map what we do, I gave a very small sampling here, but for multimodal transportation and mobility solutions, the traffic management modernization effort, Cartograph Asset Management is a solution that we're working with, and we're trying to extend that, and the construction management system, which is around managing our CIP projects. Those are things that we're actively working on at the moment. For safe and vibrant neighborhoods, the public safety components, computer automated dispatch, a records management system for both PD and fire, we're in the process of replacing the fire system, fire alerting, and construction management, again, helps with making sure that we have those vibrant neighborhoods. And then Innovative and Accountable Government is around our ERP systems, both PeopleSoft and the JD Edwards accounting part, as well as cybersecurity is a key component of that. Now, I'd like to have a little show and tell or fun to kind of give you a bit of an understanding of the scope and the depth of the work that we do. So if you look at what I call by the numbers, on our network component, in our telecom, which is kind of Jeremiah's area, we have 14,700 monitored interfaces, almost 5,400 daily wireless users, 424 access points to enable that, 13 terabytes of wireless data transfers, transfers, and 529 terabytes of monthly wired transfers. I won't run through all of these numbers, but just highlighting a few of them. On the telecom side, we do 123,000 phone calls per month, 4,385 conference calls per month, and that's just through Skype, that doesn't include the Zoom and the other GoToMeeting and other things that we use. We have 13 contact centers, or kind of help desk, as you might know them, 4,200 phone numbers and 1,700 phones supported. When you start talking about, this is an extension of Jeremiah's area, the systems area, 1.8 petabytes of storage, and a lot of people are like, you know, what is a petabyte? To give you some example scale of that, the Library of Congress is estimated to be three petabytes of data. So, we're at 1.8, that's a lot of data that we manage and we store, everything from our video storage to our, to our documents. We have 721 servers, we identified that today, 2,620 mailboxes, we send almost 1.7 emails, or receive that many per month, and we send 235,000 per month. We have over 1,000 cameras that we manage. The service desk is supporting 3,200 computers, 960 cellphones, 605 tablets, and 325 printers, and those printers print 665,000 pages per month. And I need to touch on the radio there, we are a regional radio system, we don't just do the radio for ourselves, we support 14 other agencies, and we support all of their radios, so we don't have 5,800 radios, but we support 5,800 radios. So we do that for the entire, and we have 10 radio towers. On the development side, we have 21 custom applications, there's more than that, I only counted significant applications, we have a lot of small little, you know, things that we script, kind of things that we do. We do 728 support requests annually, 1,341 databases. We have 372 commercial off-the-self applications that we support with 37 interfaces, and that number should be significantly higher, we'll talk about that a little bit later. We have two full ERP systems, those ERP systems have 71 applications and workflows, 12 modules, and support almost 4,200 users. And GIS is a very sizable component for us. People seldom realize, you think of GIS, you think of a map. GIS is used to drive so many applications and so many capabilities for the city. We have 71 public applications, that's a full application in the GIS space, 64 internal applications, 19 dashboards, and 127 Tableau dashboards, which is part of our business intelligence components. So I talked earlier about the work that we were doing to define a strategy. It's very important for me that we have good governance and prioritization to manage IT. We want to manage it like it's a business, but in a municipal environment where we understand that we can't do things by overnight, we have to do things strategically to enable our citizens. These are the six strategic items that my team came up with through our working sessions. Ensure continuity of operations using secure programs, security program with the best-in-class security standards and practices and technologies, that's all around business continuity and disaster recovery, it's a key focus for us. Enhance access to timely and relevant data to inform and empower organizations and citizens, that is around data-driven management, and that's kind of the way we label that, and we try to make that pervasive through everything that we do. We want to improve the processes and leverage technology to enhance the quality and levels of service. These next two are around managing the business of IT, this is around our internal operations and consistency of delivery procedures and processes, and tracking what we do, and doing it in a prioritized and governed way. The next one's around reducing the cost, the risk, and the limitations associated with aging and redundant technology. That is around managing the life cycle of both our applications and our assets. It's one thing to put in great technology, but you got to keep that technology current, you got to keep it patched, if like, applications need to be patched, and at some point, you need to assess, is it a little long in the tooth, is it time to replace that application? So that's what that one's about. And then the next one's just around making sure that we are constantly meeting with the departments and meeting their needs, it's addressing their specific business priorities in a prioritized and governed way. And then the last one is around improving our capabilities through the constant development of our staff, so that we can constantly elevate the services that we provide. So this is around kind of getting a perspective over the last five years versus the next five years, and it's, we're making a significant shift, and kind of want to point that out. The last five years has been predominantly around building up our infrastructure, our data center, our networks, making sure that we have the capabilities to run the city of excellence in a way that we have robust technology backing up the things we're trying to do, and that we don't have downtime, and that we have continuity of operations, that we have the capacity to deliver the solutions that the departments need. Of course, they've also done some targeted, you know, pointed departmental solutions, and there was a lot of focus on team member development, but it was predominantly focused on core technical skills certifications. Where we're moving into the next period, the next five-year strategic period, is we want to be, have a much bigger focus on those consultative solutions that meet the department's needs. We want to improve how we manage our applications and our infrastructure, making sure that we don't let that lapse. There was so much good work done over the past five years, we need to not just say, oh, it's good, we're done, we need to make sure that we keep that modernization effort going, but with a focus on the solution side. And then we want to basically increase our business continuity and disaster recovery capabilities, and we want to do that very much in a business-driven way, not a technology-driven way. We want to make sure, and we'll talk, we can talk about this now, we don't want to just have a DR plan that says we're going to bring up, let's just say, the library inventory management system first, if there's a disaster. That's a very important system for managing libraries, in a disaster, it's not the first system we bring up. We need to bring up the public safety systems, we need to bring up CAD, we need to bring up the dispatching, the 911 center, we need to bring up payroll, so people can get paid. So that's, but we're going to let the business drive those decisions, then architect to meet those needs. And of course, we want to continue to focus on development of employees, but we want to do that more focused on the soft skills, the consultative skills, and the leadership skills. This is my sticky note slide. It is not very different than the strategic slide examples that I went through, but this makes it more meaningful for my team, and helps us, whenever someone comes to us for the project, or when we come up with a project ourselves, to run it through this filter. So if someone was talking about a project that they wanted to do, something around modernizing, bringing in a new tool to modernize our application development, I would quickly look at this and say, well, that was going to be multiple of these, and I would go through it. To quickly kind of highlight some of these without reading them to you, we have a very big focus on citizen engagement and access to information. We need to be meeting citizens and the departments where they are, not force them to come to pre-existing solutions that we kind of brought out of the box canned for them. They need to actually meet their needs the way that they expect to be met. We need to improve our collaboration tools, COVID taught us that, we can't sit in kind of the old model, we have to be able to operate in the model that supports what, how people need to work today. And we want to basically increase our collaboration with the business departments, which I've talked a lot about, we meet with them on at least a quarterly basis, not just the department heads, but their key people. Our security posture and our DR plans are infinitely important to us, and a lot of that will help be driven by having standards, policies, and procedures in place, so we have repeatable operations, and business continuity is not just about the technology, it's also about the processes that you use. And then, business process automation and data-driven management are key. One of the things that I want technology to have a focus on is trying to be a force multiplier. Now, we can't do big-ticket force multiplication, but we can automate things, and we can integrate things, and that integration means that people aren't having to do that manual labor. It also means that you don't get transcription errors, it also means that that data doesn't take a week or two weeks to get there. The system should be running that every three minutes, or even near real time when needed, and then you got better data-driven management, you can trust the report you're looking at, because you know that it's accurate and it's timely. And then technology governance and team culture is key, because we have to change the culture to be this consultative organization. So, kind of wrapping that up, just showing you kind of my sticky note slide, if you will, these are some of the key projects that we're currently working on. We're trying to develop, working with city management and some departments, through a process that I'm actually going to be presenting this Friday, around an approach to citywide app, or as I'm referring to it, a city portal, a way for, as I said on the previous slide, the first point was meeting citizens where they're at, not making them understand how to build a watch to tell what time it is. We want to, we are working on construction management software to manage our CIP processes better, we have a legacy police RMS software, and we're working to modernize that, not just to get it in that app modernization that you've heard me talk about a couple times, but to get it into the capabilities and the features and the function they knew. You can read through a lot of these, but one of the key ones here, assume, is a business process modernization tool, we'll be presenting that one Friday after next, and that will be to, to enable us to deliver solutions that aren't commercial off-the-self solutions, much faster, low code, where I don't have to have a suite of technology experts to do that. Traffic management modernization, we're improving our radio system, refreshing end-to-life equipment, and it will significantly increase our capacity on the radio, which means that the public safety components won't have to worry about, you know, outages and glitches in the radio, and enable us to do a lot more in an automated way of programming radios and things of that nature. And then the rest of this is really around improving our security posture and several projects that are going to help us do that. And as quickly as I can, telling you about a very large department, and I did talk fast to give them the time limit, that's all I have, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any questions for Roger? Councilman Rick Adelman?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you so much for the excellent work you guys do, and for that great presentation. One of your first slides talked about information security threats that we may face from outside, especially in the current geopolitical landscape. Do we coordinate with other levels of government, Department of Defense, or anything like that, regarding cybersecurity issues and attacks that we might anticipate from foreign actors or from terrorists, or anything of that nature?
There are multiple entities, and some of them I don't talk about too much publicly that we coordinate, we get information from, there's multiple ones that we're plugged into, there's some that are known and that you would expect me to plug into. CISA is a federal agency that's was set up, so we get constant alerts and monitoring from them, and actually was engaging with them today on some things, so it's an interactive relationship. We're engaging with them on our disaster recovery continuity plan, so yeah, we get a lot of interaction with that, and there's a gentleman sitting a lot of interaction with that. And there's a gentleman sitting somewhere behind me that's very involved in this, named Sam, that constantly makes sure that I get latest and greatest things to his organizations as well.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much for y'all's great work on that.
Catherine Williams?
Thank you very much, Roger. This is entirely speaking my language. I've got a couple of questions. In one of the earlier slides, when you're showing everything by the numbers, if I remember the number right, I think we have 832 fax accounts or several hundred. Are those all still necessary?
Well, that's really a departmental question. But there are, so I will tell you firsthand, there are a certain number of those fax accounts, especially in the public safety side, that that's just the way a lot of those agencies do business. And we are, we are constrained in that way. And there's other ones that I haven't dug into yet.
And Roger, aren't some of those like the right fax, digital fax accounts?
There's a whole lot of different scenarios. I mean, it's, the list is long of, they're not like, there's very few of these that are what you're thinking of as a traditional fax. Very few.
Okay. Second, I know we have the annual cybersecurity training for staff, and the recent training is much better than the first training I went through after I was elected. Do you conduct phishing drills or have reporting mechanisms for suspected phishing? Because I think that's a, a much better, a much better lock in somebody's memory when they click on something and they get a message saying, you fell for it.
Yeah. So we actually make it a significant exercise every year to go through the suite of available training to make sure that it's relevant and poignant to kind of what we're seeing in the organization. We customize that training in a product called Know Before every year. As far as for phishing goes, I just presented about three weeks ago to my boss an approach to phishing that we're going to do. It's a fairly sophisticated phishing. And I wanted her to be aware because that does create some angst in the organization. People don't like being tricked. But it's a good way for us to identify. And one of the things we do is we're actually going to track privately. We're not going to public shame anyone, but we're going to track who does fall for the phishing. And then we're going to use that Know Before training to send them some targeted training, and they will be required to complete that training. And we will notify their management if they don't.
Okay.
And we're also doing some scenarios where we're sending out some, we haven't sent one out yet to the broad audience, but several select people have seen it. Some, they're like little videoettes of role in action, but they're very, they're like professionally done. It's like watching like, you know, The Bourne Identity kind of a thing of people that are actually hacking security, like, you know, using different techniques to sneak in, you know, tailgating through doors and things and stuff like that, and showing how that happens. And so we'll be using that as well.
Okay, great. My last question is about data aggregation efforts and BI. So with data aggregation, a couple of the immediate things that leap to mind are compiling our agendas and budgeting. But it occurs to me that there are numerous areas across the city organization where we could streamline our data efforts, data sharing and aggregation. But what use are you making of BI to kind of not only drive that, but derive actionable insights?
Yeah. And your question could go a couple of different ways. Let me hit both pieces of it.
Yeah, it's a little loaded question.
We just last week updated a product that has not been updated in a very long time, was very kind of legacy functionality called Socrata, which allows us to do large data aggregations to create data repositories. The old version simply created a repository and then when somebody asked for data, we had the repository provide it. The newer version has a lot of self-service capabilities. So there's a lot of people that don't want to ask for a document. They want to be able to go into like, you know, and see the crime in a certain neighborhood and actually analyze it themselves. So it will enable those capabilities, and we're working on releasing that component as we speak. It will also allow us to use it internally so that we can hit that for reporting purposes. And we are expanding our Tableau experience and doing a lot more, a lot less target reports. Like, for example, the fire department is extremely mature. Like, I'm struggling to keep up with how mature they are and what their requests are because, you know, they were trying to get just tons and tons of reports. And then they were creating these repositories to do all this very in-depth analysis, which is quite impressive. But what we're trying to do is give them a report that has the whole universe of data in it that allows them to do, basically not even look at the data, but to look at the analysis of the data to determine if they need to look at the data. So we're giving them more of that analytical view. And Tableau was a great tool for that. There's many tools, Power BI and others will do it too. We have both of those, but we're trying to settle on one so that we have consistency. Yes, sir. We're doing a lot of that. We have to create those data repositories. One of the things that makes it important for me in my presentation, talking about business process automation and integration is, so too much of what we do is done outside of the systems. And, you know, I can't aggregate data that's in a filing cabinet. So we're trying to get, or in paper forms. So we're trying to make it to where you can do the data-driven management through those things. It's a multi-step process, and I'm going long, sorry.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Roger. Blame it on me.
Any other questions? Thank you. Great job. Our next item is departmental report animal services. Jamie Cantrell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm Jamie Cantrell, Animal Services Director for the City of Plano. And I'll kind of go through our presentation here with you to give you an idea of what we do day in and day out. I'll also let you know that every picture I have of the animals here are ones that are available for adoption. I've done this before. So anybody who's up on the dais here, if there happens to be any city attorneys that are looking for pets, we, we can make that happen. But I always tell people, animal control is a misnomer. If we could control the animals, there'd be no reason for us to have animal control. So any city department that's still using that, that term animal control, I tell them they're lying to their citizens. We're Animal Services. We can service the animals, but we definitely cannot control them. Our objectives, everything that we do always has three main objectives. First and foremost, we are public safety. We're there to protect the public from diseases, from being bitten by stray animals, and also to reduce the incidence of vehicle damage and accidents because that does happen. People, an animal runs out in front of them and their instinct is, is to swerve, and that can sometimes cause really bad accidents. I can't blame the people. I mean, nobody wants to run over any animal, but unfortunately, that does mean that sometimes people are put in harm's way. We're also there to protect the animals from abuse and neglect. And we have dealt with numerous situations, especially recently, of animals who were being abused that we have had to step in and work with our police department on. But we also are there to improve the quality of life. So if there's nuisances in the neighborhood, if your neighbor decides they want to have 150 cats next door to you, you're going to be thankful that you can call us and that we'll be able to come out and address that for you. There we go. So some of the things that we do are local rabies control incidents. Those are what we, are what most people consider animal bites. By state law, we, every city and county has to designate a local rabies control authority by ordinance. Our LRCA is me. And so anytime that a dog, cat, ferret, other animal bites someone, we have to get involved and ensure that that animal is quarantined according to state law, just to make sure that there was no possible way that they could have transmitted rabies to the individual who was bitten at the time of the bite. Sometimes people get upset by that because it doesn't matter if your own pet bites you, it still has to be quarantined. But that's one of the reasons why we try to tell people it's so important to keep your rabies vaccinations current because as long as your rabies vaccinations are current and your animal wasn't violating the law by running loose or something like that, then we can normally do a home quarantine for you. And we prefer that as well because that lets the animals stay home where they're comfortable, lets the people keep them. But by law, we can't do that if those conditions aren't met. Obviously, we also are out there picking up all of the animals that are, are running loose, that have escaped their yards and are out having a fun playdate. We do adoptions, humane education, deceased animal pickup, definitely not the fun part of our job. But if we weren't there to do it, you would notice that very quickly as creating nuisance in the neighborhood. We also deal with dangerous animals, pet registration, and of course, all of the enforcement of any animal-related ordinance, anything that has to do with an animal in the city. It doesn't matter if it's domestic wild livestock. We're going to be the ones that are in charge of handling it. So our last fiscal year, you can see we took in nearly 5,400 animals. And you can see the breakdown there. Majority are dogs and cats, but we do also deal with wildlife is the majority of that, 1,358 others. There are also livestock animals, birds and rabbits and other small animals that will be in there as well. You can see our numbers there that return to their owners. Out of those that were euthanized, though, you can see 630 were dogs and cats. Over 300 of those were requested by their owner. So we had no animals that were euthanized for space limitations. And if you look at our numbers there, that means that only 8% roughly of all dogs and cats that we handled were euthanized. For a city shelter, we're always going to have to euthanize some animals because our job is to get the ones that are not friendly off the streets. Our job is to get those that are not healthy off the streets. So unfortunately, there's no way we can say we would never euthanize anything. But that's just kind of the, the nature of our department. We can't control what comes into us. We can only respond to those situations where, where we need to assist. And ICE, if you see there, that's not a weird typo. He actually, one blue eye, one brown eye. It's very striking to see him in person, just it is in that picture. We also completed over 10,000 field calls. You can see there, handled 374 local rabies control incidents. If every bite that occurred in the City of Plano was actually reported to us, that number would be much, much higher. But I'll be honest with you, it probably, we may get a third of all the bites that happened in the city, if that, that actually are reported. Because a lot of people, if you get bitten by your own pet and you don't have to go to the doctor or anything for it, they're probably not going to call us and, and turn their own dogs in. And that makes up the majority of the bites that we deal with in our city. You can also see over 35,000 visitors to the shelter, and we sterilized over 1,700 animals for the year. 8,910 volunteer hours is, most cities would be very envious to have that many volunteer hours donated. Unfortunately for us, that's kind of a disappointment, and I'll talk more about that in a second. But you can also see in the last citizen survey that we did, over, or 77% of respondents surveyed as satisfied or very satisfied. And that is something we definitely can work on. But you also look at it and see that's 24% above national and state averages for animal control. Animal services programs are not historically known as being the good guys in most situations. If any of you can tell me a movie right now where the dog catcher was the hero? Noah? Yeah. It never happens. That's not the way it is. We, you know, even, even the police department has, has people out there that like them. But animal services, it's a little harder sometimes for people to love us. So for us to get 77% is a, is actually a pretty good number, but definitely not something we're satisfied with. Also, pet registration program. All dogs, cats, and ferrets are required to be registered in Plano. That's so we can verify their rabies vaccination. You can see there, we had a little over 10,100 pets that were registered, and that was a little over $97,000 in revenue. If all the pets in Plano that we estimate are in the city were here, it would cover more than 50% of our annual budget. I tell people, it's, it's no different than the, your registration tag for your car. The people who drive benefit from the roads more because they're out there driving on them. Everybody benefits from roads, but if you actually own a car and you're driving, you have more of a benefit from it and you, you pay more because you're putting that sticker on your car. Pets are the same way. The majority of the calls that we deal with are because of dogs and cats. So if you have those, then you're kind of creating the need for our services more, and that's what your registration helps take care of. Additionally, by state law, all registration fees have to be used for the animal services program. So let's say that everybody registered their pets, it's, that money can't be used to fill potholes or anything else. It would have to go to the animal shelter. Some of the things that we deal with, wildlife issues that council may get to calls about sometimes, those are very cyclical complaints. We have evaluated our trapping program every year since 2009 when it was this, when it was eliminated. And it has never been something that we recommended for reinstatement, simply because the cost is so high and the impact that it has is negligible on the wildlife populations. So essentially, you would have a very small group of people in Plano who would get a huge benefit from it. Vast majority of people would see absolutely no impact. So to spend that kind of money, we don't feel is the, the best use of limited resources. Instead, we try to do education, prevent the problems. We will help people if they have their own trap. We will go out and pick up those animals and, and, you know, remove them for them. We'll also help educate them on how they can deal with whatever attractants that are bringing the wildlife into their, their homes or their neighborhoods because wild animals really don't like us. You know, it's, if they're coming around, it's for food, water, or shelter. And in fact, one of the best ways to get rid of wildlife is to put a radio out and put it on talk radio. They hate the sound of our voices. So you put that out there, you get, especially you get a really political, you know, where they're, they're a little aggravated and that, that will get rid of whatever wildlife you have in the backyard. That's actually true. I'm not lying to you. If you call us tomorrow, that's what we're going to tell you. So this is where you can see how COVID kind of had an impact on our department. Prior to COVID, our volunteer hours, you can see there, over 18,000. We lost about 10,000, not quite 10,000 hours of volunteer time, which makes it difficult on us because that means our staff has to go and, and kind of take the place of all of those free hours that we were getting. So our workload goes up, makes it much more difficult on us. And plus, the animals really benefit from having those volunteers come in the shelters. We love the volunteers. We are just now trying to get everything ramped back up again. We have a long waiting list because of people who, who want to go through our training program and start volunteering with us. So I'm hoping in the next few years, we will build that back up because, you know, the year before I started in Plano, we had about 2,500 volunteer hours. You can see there, we got it up to nearly 20,000. We can do that again. It's just going to take us time to rebuild. We also lost out on all of those educational presentations because we couldn't go out into the community and do some of the things that we used to do. Our visitors, you can see, dropped significantly. And your visitors will always have a correlation on the number of adoptions. The more people coming through, the more animals you're going to get adopted. And you can see that there in our numbers as well. So with that, do we have any questions for you?
Any questions? Oh, Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. One thing I was curious about, yeah, I have heard or read through some areas that there seems to be an increase in the distemper among pet population. Have we seen that here in Plano, or is that something we should be concerned about?
We haven't seen that here in Plano yet. A few years ago, I want to say it was around 2016, if I remember correctly, we had a horrible outbreak of distemper in the raccoon population.
Right.
Raccoons are capable of getting both the feline and canine version of distemper. So they are a carrier of it out there in the community. Now, we always recommend to everyone, make sure that all of your pets have, have all of their vaccinations, not just distemper, but the rabies vaccination, the parvo vaccinations as well, because that's the first line of protection for your entire family. If, if you happen to get a rabid animal that gets in your backyard and you don't know it, then your dog gets exposed to it, or your dog's going to be around the rest of the family. So always a good idea to keep those vaccinations current. But I have seen, I believe it was in Arlington, where they said they have seen a, a big outbreak. That's kind of Mother Nature's way of, of handling overpopulation. You will see a, a disease come through and, and the weaker ones all die off, and the ones that are left can have a little bit stronger immune system. And, you know, it kind of goes from there. And nature has a very cyclical way of doing things. And so we may see it coming in later. It's still a little early. A lot of times with distemper, you'll see after the rains come through as well, the, the water and stuff helps kind of get them, get the disease kind of transmit, or transmitted from one to the other. So we will sometimes see that, but as of right now, we have not seen that the way that we have in the past.
Good. Good to know it hadn't been a problem for us here in Plano. Thanks, James.
So I actually understand this more than IT. I just wanted to know, there was something that you mentioned in the, in where if my neighbor had 150 cats, you know, the cat lady, you, we would call you. What, what, what procedure do you guys go through if we were to call you and say, hey, my neighbor has 150 cats? What do you do?
Well, first and foremost, we go out and we investigate for ourselves. You know, we're not going to take any complaint that we get as being the truth. We're going to go out and we're going to look. Now, if we find that there are more animals than are allowed by ordinance, then we're going to handle that appropriately. Now, 150, that was a little extreme, but honestly, we have dealt with that here in Plano before. It's not unheard of. But in those cases, what we're going to do is we're going to work with some of the resources that we have in the area to get the person help with their hoarding issues that they have. And, you know, from there, we will stay on top of them a little more than what we would a, a regular. And, you know, from there, we will stay on top of them a little more than what we would a a regular citizen. We're gonna be going by doing regular visits and things once we get them down where they're legal.
I mean, I guess there, there's two questions that's really involved in this. So one of them is, are, will you remove, involuntarily remove these animals? And two, do you actually look in to the resident residential owner to see whether or not there's any mental issues that's causing them to have, you know, these hoarding issues with pets? And, you know, that's, I think that's where I was looking at.
We will always try to have them voluntarily surrender animals to us. Number one, that makes it easier for us because we can immediately start, you know, placing them in new homes or or handling them appropriately. If we have to seize them legally with a warrant, then that's going to drag it out to where it could take up to 30 days before we can can get final ownership. So we always want them to voluntarily give them to us. A lot of times, they will work with us. And we have been very successful with that recently, with getting them to understand why we're having to do what we have to do. Now, we also will work with our property standards department and come in because there are homes that have been condemned due to the the conditions that were there, present due to the animals. And so there's a variety of resources that we use. If the person, well, I'll tell you this, if they are an animal hoarder, true animal hoarder, then yes, they have mental issues. I mean, that's, it's it's a recognized mental health disorder now. We will try to give them resources. We will try to help them find the help that they need. But we can't force that upon them. They, people, you have the right to live in filth and in squalor if you want, as long as you aren't creating a a health nuisance for your neighborhood, basically.
So I have another question. I'm sorry. So the second one would be the euthanized pet. You mentioned that with about 300 of the euthanizing are done due to owners' requests. So do you investigate? I mean, like, if the owner comes in and go, here, just, you know, put this dog to to rest, do you just say, okay, fine, we we're just gonna?
No.
Do that?
No. What we do is, whenever someone brings an animal in like that, what they sign is ownership of the animal over to the city. And at that point, it says in there, it's our discretion what we do. If we had a situation not too, well, it was actually this past year, not too long ago, where the people told us the dog was horribly aggressive, it was biting everyone in the household. And so they signed it over for euthanasia. We get it there and the dog, we can't get it to to do anything. We're pulling his tail, his ears, everything, nothing. And they ended up coming back or mad that we hadn't euthanized it. And it's like, we told them, like, we're not doing that. We can't find any reason why. But I will tell you this, that is a very rare situation. Vast majority of times, people who bring their pets to us for euthanasia, they're doing it for the right reasons. Because the animal is so old and suffering or it is aggressive and and not safe to be around, you know, their own families or or the community. So it is very uncommon for us to not follow through in those situations. But if we suspect anything or we're not seeing what they're, they're claiming is wrong with the animal, then no, we will not euthanize it just based on their word.
Thank you so much.
Jamie, can I ask just one additional comment, not for response right now, but we'll get an email from you later on. But can you provide an update on the backyard hens?
I can. And I can do that very quickly, actually.
Okay.
So we have had, if I remember correctly, I think there are 14 applicants so far. There are six that have been approved. Out of all of those, though, only one was approved on their very first try. Everybody else, we, it's kind of time intensive because we have to go through and look at everything and make sure that they're meeting the minimum requirements of the ordinance. I will tell you, though, we expect to get more coming in during the spring. A lot of people have talked about that, you know, they didn't want to try to bring in new chicks for the winter. Obviously, that when you're, the little ones don't do so well in the cold. So they're gonna wait until it gets, we're past all the freezes and things and then that's whenever they're gonna start, you know, getting their their coops and things like that. So I'll have better information about that towards the end of the fiscal year, as far as the numbers that we dealt with. But as of right now, that's where we're at currently.
Thank you, Jamie. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item, item five, departmental rapport, planning department, Christina Day.
Good evening. All right. I will have to remember next time to try to get a better agenda placement, not after the cute dogs, cats and other animals. So I'll try to do my best to keep this interesting in comparison. So I am pleased to talk to you, though, about the planning department. And thank you for for having me here this evening. So the planning department's mission is to, of course, help fulfill the city's vision to maintain Plano as a global economic leader bonded by a shared sense of community where residents experience unparalleled quality of life. And how we do that is through our commitment to provide outstanding planning development, heritage preservation and land record services, through cooperative efforts that engage Plano citizens and contribute to both the long-term and immediate quality of life in the city. So the functions of the department span zoning and development, planning and preservation, and land records planning, and that's all tied together through our administrative services. So you'll see those through the slides. We kind of tie that together through the functions of the department. One of the main roles is our customer service. So this just gives a little snapshot of the variety of customer service functions we provide. One of the kind of points I'd like to make here is how, again, you've heard sort of a theme through the various departments this evening, COVID, 83 walk-ins. Well, that's kind of abnormal, right? We normally have seven to 8,000 walk-in customers. The department was closed through much of the year, did mainly virtual services. So that's really unusual. So we're seeing that pick up, but that was a very unusual number for last year. We have two standing boards and commissions that are some of the primary role of our support. We have the privilege of working with really fantastic citizens that are appointed to serve on these boards. And they meet regularly. You see the number of plans and projects that are approved through both the Planning and Zoning Commission and certificates of appropriateness through the Heritage Commission last year. The Heritage Preservation Program continues to run strong. It's a consistent number of applications that come through the Heritage Commission. Forty-two certificates of appropriateness were issued last year. So that, those numbers were not really impacted by the pandemic. And then one of the things we're really proud of here is that the certificates of appropriateness, the majority of those are issued at staff level and are turned in a day or less. Really, almost three quarters approved in a day or less. So this program has really done a lot of work. I want to brag for a minute about the work that's been done. Really, over the last kind of five to seven years, it's done a full overhaul. We noticed that there were some kind of misalignments that have happened over the years. So there's been a full revamp. The preservation plan, the heritage ordinance, the tax exemption ordinance, and the design guidelines for both districts, as well as the Heritage Commission working with the Planning and Zoning Commission to enable conservation districts. All these things have been accomplished to align this, fully align this program over the last, again, five years or so. And so those efforts have garnered national recognition for this program, for the city and the commission members. So that's really largely come to a close. But I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge this concerted effort to review and update the Heritage Preservation Program for the city. So Conference of Plan 2021. You may think, hey, isn't that project over? Well, from our perspective, it's just kind of getting started. So we have a lot of work that's being done on this now that the plan was adopted. So what is it you're doing, we're doing on this? Well, we have been working with departments to actually implement the plan. So we've sent spreadsheets to everyone with their assigned plans. They're updating them by priority, status, timeframes for completion, trying to get funding sources identified, really getting the plan implemented and underway. So we're working to implement them and integrate them into our budget and CIP review processes. So as well as posters for department, we want this to be kind of top of mind, obviously, to get things really working and operating. And those actions, a part ingrained within the department's work programs, we want them to be something that they see on a regular basis. We are reinstituting the annual report so that the progress is seen and understood for transparency. We also want online progress, so that's part of that annual reporting. We will have that information part of the website so that there is, again, transparency. People can look at it anytime to see what's going on. And then feedback tools online, so people can tell us how they think we're doing. Do they like these programs, these policies? Give us that type of instant, again, feedback on the plan. And then we can report that back in the annual report to you. So moving on to development review. Interestingly, we had a substantial increase in the number of plans last year. That's a 20% increase over the prior fiscal year, a 9% increase over the 2018-19 year. So we've seen a jump in development over the last year. And then also, we're seeing zoning cases take longer to process. So we had more zoning cases last year. We had 48 zoning cases last year, which was a high in the last five years. And then over the last two years, we've seen a increase in the length of time it takes to process zoning cases. So moving on from that, looking at where zoning cases are located. Really, we generally have kind of a broad spread of zoning. But this year, or in the last year, we've had a kind of concentration of zoning along the 75 corridor and really along the southern portion of the 75 corridor. So that's been a bit unique. But again, you see they really are spread throughout the city. But a lot of interest in kind of this, again, the southern part of US 75. So I know you all are also aware that we've been very focused on zoning process improvements. A lot of those came out of the comprehensive plan review process. And we're very happy to get coverage from the Dallas Morning News on the zoning alert tool. Last I checked, we have about 600 residents that have signed up. People can actually select based on zip code to get email alerts when zoning cases in their area are are there. We also have a new integration of information online with our active zoning petitions page. So that's easier to use. You can see plans and maps related to that information. So lots of additional information or better access to information on zoning for the public. With regard to undeveloped land, we keep track of this each year. And there are 2,100 acres currently undeveloped, a little over, 2,139. And that was reduced by 116 acres. That results in 4.6% undeveloped land. I know that seems to just kind of creep down little by little. I know we've been saying 5% for a long time. It seems like we've had a lot of development going on. But a lot of that is also redevelopment of existing parcels. So while you may see a lot of development happening, it may not always be knocking undeveloped parcels off the map. So that may be why. But there we are at 2,100 acres, 4.6%. So looking at residential development. This is our long-term housing permitting trends, starting back in the mid 90s when we had a lot of housing going on. To my knowledge, our big housing spike, that we had the most housing going on in the 1990s, being built really in the 1990s. And then this year, we had a significant low of housing, 317 single-family permits, 347 multifamily permits, and 97 independent living units occurring. And that is the lowest we've seen since the recession of 2008 to 2010, that timeframe. So really, not a lot of housing permits in the community. And we're sitting at 37% multifamily, 63% single-family. That's our current housing distribution within the city. So here's our active residential areas map. If you want to see this in greater detail, all this information is on our annual report that you can find on the department webpage. So all this detail is available online. But you can see broken down all all the active developments where residential is being developed throughout the city. So you can see every location that there's residential development occurring. And the, and by type, it's sorted by type. And then where there are existing units, pending units and projected units. And the point that I think is interesting here is this was impacted by the new comprehensive plan. There's 11,000 units of single-family projected, 5,500 units of multifamily projected. And that's really related to and strongly influenced by the future land use map of the comprehensive plan. And so this is a 2042 or 20-year projection of housing distribution by type. And it results in a 60% single-family, 40% multifamily ratio over the next 20 years. So moving on to our information and demographic research. The city is currently sitting at 95% housing occupancy with a population of 285,000 or just over in the 2020 census. And you see, over time, the significant demographic changes. We are below, for the first time in the 2020 census, a majority white. We are no longer a majority white. We have no majority population from an ethnicity perspective. So there have been, continue to be significant gains in the Asian and Hispanic populations. And that it just continued those those trends of diversification of the community. So we meet annually with all the school districts or offer to meet annually. Typically, we have Plano ISD and Frisco ISD attend those meetings, as well as Collin College. So we see significant trends within the city as far as a reduction in school-age children. And so we've shown a comparison of the city of Plano compared to the county, the state and the United States. So while the demographic trends nationwide do show a aging of the population, you can see how Plano's population is essentially aging faster. Or we have fewer school-age children or young children than the national, state and county trends. And that's also reflected in our school population. So you see how the senior population in PISD compares to the kindergarten compares to the kindergarten population in the district, and how that was impacted very kind of abruptly by the pandemic. So we have two interactive tools that we've been working with. One stems directly from the comprehensive plan review process, the land use and housing inventory. So that is online. You can go and check out any place in the city, look at specific land use data and how both that relates to the comprehensive plan and specific parcels. And then internally, we have a master housing database. So that helps us pull consistent, accurate, timely, responsive housing requests. So hopefully, we're able to provide you better, quicker housing data. And then coming at your next meeting, we'll be talking about a Silver Line corridor market study with the new stations coming online quickly. We've been working with an economist to provide market data that shows how the real estate in those areas may be impacted by the rail station. So we'll be bringing that to you. And then I just wanted to highlight a couple of recognitions that were received for the Preservation Plano 150 Plan. It was recognized by Preservation Texas, as well as the American Planning Association. And then the department also received a Planning Excellence Award last year. That completes my department report for the year, and I'm available for questions you might have.
Thanks, Christina. Any questions? Councilman Williams?
Christina, this isn't actually a question. I just wanted to recognize, as heavy a lift as it was to, for you and your staff to work through the creation of the new comprehensive plan, to your point at the beginning of this presentation, I recognize that actually implementing it is a mammoth task by itself. So I just wanted to say I appreciate all the work.
Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Rick Adeli?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to quickly also say, great work on the 2021 comprehensive plan. I know that was a heavy lift for the staff and that, you know, the passage of the plan is the tip of the iceberg. So thank you for your continued work on that. You know, it's really appreciated.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Certainly.
So you mentioned the time is longer to complete zoning cases. Is that more a product of the commission and the council or something else? I mean, is it, are we holding cases up, or is it something else?
I think the cases themselves are getting more complex. We had, the majority of cases are still taking the same kind of 90-day timeframe. There were a few cases that took much, much longer. So there were a few outliers over the last few years that were just very complicated or long cases. Things like the North Texas Municipal Water District, that case was very long. That's one that I could think that was incredibly, that the numbers on that skewed the average, I'll say.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much. Next item is discussion direction regarding the American Rescue Plan, which we sometimes shorten it to ARP, the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Funds. And I'll turn that over to Mark.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you're all aware, the American Rescue Plan Act came into existence last year. The city of Plano, we receive a total of $36.4 million over two tranches of money last year. In early June, on June 1st, we received the first tranche of money, $18.2 million. Prior to that, we had a discussion with council about appropriating those funds. The city was able to recover those funds by claiming 100% of them for revenue replacement for the provision of government services. And that actually applies to all $36.4 million. So we have provided documentation through our accounting department to claim all $36.4 under the revenue replacement for the provision of government services due to revenue lost during the COVID-19 pandemic and the economic downturn at that time. Last year, staff recommended applying $18.2 million for $15.7 to the general fund, $1 million to convention and tourism, and $1.5 for the recreation revolving fund, recognizing the losses that those funds had experienced due to the COVID-19 pandemic. This year, we are anticipating the second tranche of money to arrive in the same timeframe, so end of May, early June. I've been approached by several council members about those funds. Staff has met to consider projects that could be compliant with some previous direction we'd received from council, focusing specifically on projects that have a direct impact to the budgets that would be forthcoming now or possibly in the future with some CIP. And the preference from council members had been towards those capital improvement projects. So with that, the city staff has brought together several recommendations. First and foremost is allocating $10 million to the water and sewer fund. The water and sewer fund experienced decreased revenues as many of our corporations were work-from-home status, as well as our schools. So the usage at those large campuses and buildings was not typical. So we saw our sewer fund specifically reduce significantly over that time. So we have experienced revenue loss in the water and sewer fund commensurate with that discussion of $10 million. We would like to recommend allocation of those funds towards a parallel sewer interceptor that would be running along Plano Parkway. This project is just about as close to shovel-ready as you can imagine, scheduled to begin in summer 2022. And so that would provide some relief through the capital funds over to the water and sewer fund. The second allocation would be to the general fund. We have been pursuing, fortifying in some ways, our heating and cooling at some of the city facilities, knowing that the electric grid experienced some challenges during Winter Storm Uri. We have looked to see what we can do to provide heating and cooling stations at some of our recreation centers, as well as Plano Event Center. We have put in orders for a number of generators to make sure that we can provide adequate facilities for the Plano public, as well as our facilities for public safety, to ensure that we are always operational and always able to provide some form of relief to the public. We still have a number of expenditures there that we need to finish up in order to be able to complete that project, and that would total of about $5 million. And so that is part of the general fund recommendation. The second portion of that deals directly with a future, or a future project. We anticipate that Fire Station 3 is going to need a complete overhaul. So essentially, a new building would actually be preferable because of the proximity and constraints that we have at Fire Station 3 to the neighborhood there. So our next bond referendum would include a project that would include a side acquisition and building of a new building for Fire Station 3 for our fire department. We have located a piece of land in close proximity to Fire Station 3 that would allow us to keep our current response times. We think that moving forward with acquisition of the land would secure that piece of property that would allow us to maintain our service level in that particular area. And then that next bond referendum, instead of having the entire project to pay for through debt, we would just have the building portion to pay for through debt. So with that, that's the staff recommendation, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Mark, we had talked about this before. Do we anticipate that there potentially could be a snag in the second portion of funds actually being funded at the congressional level?
Councilman Smith, that's a great question. We have heard rumors in undercurrent that there could be a discussion about pulling those back at the federal side and not dispersing those to the city. And obviously, we will not appropriate funds that we don't have. So while council would be given this direction tonight, possibly towards this, we will not expend any funds until they're actually received. And Denise Tackey has confirmed that they're in the bank. But we have heard that there is that discussion. We also have, as you know, a staff member and a couple of council members in Washington DC. We are talking with our delegation as they're there, explaining what we would be using with the funds and advocating that the second tranche be delivered with the intent of using them like this per the original act.
Great. And a second point, and we've spoken about this also, is one of the concerns I have, because we have such an excellent public safety group, fire and police, that are always out, they're always on the go. With the significant increases that we're seeing today in fuel costs, there's no way that any one of us could have perceived that this would happen and budgeted for it. So I just wonder if we might want to consider putting some of that general fund money aside for the unexpected expenses we're going to see from, should fuel continue to go the direction it's been going.
Well, Councilman, that's a great observation. And if anybody can tell me exactly where the fuel costs are going to go, I'm waiting for an answer.
$7.25.
There we go. $7.25. We're going to book that. So
Hopefully not, hopefully not.
So the challenge we have is that the ARC funds are actually strictly limited by the US Treasury Department and what their uses might be. So that use for fuel, we'd have to go back and double-check the possible uses for that. The $3.2 million that we've set aside for the land acquisition is a number that we feel like we've identified a piece of land. We think that we could probably secure it for that. If it was coming in lower than that, we would have some funds available to be able to be used and claimed under the salaries provision for public safety. And so those funds could come into the general fund through the use of salaries, which could provide relief in other areas if we chose to go that way, if there were some savings along those lines.
Right.
And Denise is nodding her head, so I'm getting the official blessing from the finance department.
Good. Yeah. Thank you, Mark. Appreciate the answers.
Absolutely.
Councilman Rick Adeli?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to first thank Mark and the staff for putting this list together. These are obviously all important items. I think that, especially given what Councilmember Smith mentioned about the fact that we're not certain that we'll receive these funds from the federal government yet, it would make sense to hold this discussion over to our forthcoming annual budget process, which will be coming up in four months, starting in July anyway. I think right now, we're looking at three things that are undoubtedly important items, but we're not looking at the budget holistically, other competing needs. And so to me, this would be piecemeal budgeting if we do this tonight. I think it's more of a city of excellence process to make these decisions as part of the holistic annual budget process. And since it's starting in four months, and we don't even have the money yet, and aren't sure exactly when we might get it, if we're going to get it due to the federal appropriation, I don't think there's any rush, especially this year, given the challenging budget process that I think we'll face with challenges due to inflation, the possibility of a recession that people continue to talk about, the fuel costs that Councilmember Smith mentioned. I think we need all options on the table to be able to work together on a budget under challenging and difficult conditions. So, and I've, prior to the meeting, confirmed with the city staff, and you know, of course, confirmed again earlier this evening, that we don't have to appropriate this for specific uses tonight. We can accept it for revenue replacement due to provision of government services and then wait on specific appropriations until the budget process. So I would make the suggestion that that would be the prudent course of action.
Real quick, Denise Tackey is going to add something in real quick here. Our finance story.
Hello. So, under the provisions of the act, we show that there's revenue replacement, but we have to designate what we're spending it on. So that's part of it, is you have to say where the funds are going, and that's at the time you accept them. So we have to have some idea where that's going. And that's the reason that it's difficult to just leave it in limbo.
Well, and thank you for that. And so you mentioned that we have to be able to do that at the time that we accept the funds. Assuming that the funds are appropriated, what is the deadline for accepting the funds?
Well, we'll accept them if they become available at the end of May. But the thing is, some of that money can be a little bit fungible. We can say we're using it for salary replacement. And then if that frees up money for other projects that we determine to do at that time, that's part of the budget discussion. But right now, I would not advise that you put it in limbo as to what your thoughts are about what you want to use the funds for.
Okay. Well, and thank you for that feedback. You know, I think, you know, still, given that we're not certain that we're going to receive these funds yet, and that they haven't actually been appropriated at the federal level, you know, and especially given that the information that, you know, prior to the meeting has been that we could hold off on this, I still think it would be prudent to at least hold off until the federal government has actually appropriated the money to us. And, you know, and as Director Tackey mentioned, I think, you know, appropriation for public safety salaries or something along those lines gives us the greatest flexibility. And of course, we can still use property tax revenue for any of these projects during the budget cycle, is my understanding. Please correct me if I'm wrong about that. But, you know, I think that would preserve our flexibility as we enter what I think will be a challenging budget process.
Mayor Proton?
So a couple of things. First of all, and I may have misspoke earlier, Councilman Rick Adeli on the timing for the allocation of the projects. So my apologies for that. The first thing, though, is water and sewer, as you know, is not general fund. So that's a little bit different scenario, and you're very well aware of enterprise funds versus the general fund. So that's a little separate aspect of things. But as far as the salaries and the allocation, Denise and her team are the authorities on that. And so if there's an aspect of timing to the announcement of the projects versus anything else, I would defer to Denise on that. So with that, I think.
So I have a question on the water and sewer. I know that we had discussions about plans to increase the sewer rates over time. So am I assuming correct that if we put this $10 million into the sewer fund, because you're asking us to utilize it for this parallel sewer line, that we will not be offsetting the cost of the sewer, and you will still be coming back to us this next year to raise sewer costs again?
So the, first of all, we haven't gotten the final numbers yet for the water district for that. But I would anticipate, even with this, there will likely be a sewer increase, knowing where the water district is going with their sewer rates. So this will not absorb or provide enough relief to avoid possible increases in the future. But what it'll do is it'll provide some needed resources. So the increase may be less than what it might be without it. Does that make sense?
Denise, I have a question. So at this point, we have, I don't know, maybe it's Mark's question, but if we have the $18.2 million that's going to be coming through, and we have to designate your market, does it have to be designate your market to a certain project? For example, does it have to be water and sewer? Does it have to be general? Can it be all general funds? And then, once it comes in, we could then designate where it goes through the general fund?
Well, this first tranche, we've already designated where it's going. There's the wayfinding project, and then there was the rec revolving. So we indicated in our reporting to the federal government, we've indicated that what we're doing is that we're going to pay for the instructors and that sort of thing for the rec revolving fund. We're paying for the wayfinding project for the Convention and Visitors Bureau. And then the rest of it was salary replacement.
Okay. So we've already indicated that this second trench is going to be mostly personnel, salary.
Not the second. The first one was.
Right. I understand the first one. So the first one, we already designated and separated. And I remember that discussion. I thought that was a really good idea, that we replaced a lot of the revenues that we lost for tourism and also events. But this second one, I think Councilwoman Rick Adeli's point is well taken, is that we probably need to have a little bit of flexibility. So my question to you is, do we have to designate that this money needs to go a certain amount to water and sewer, and then the remainder going to general? Can it all be designated as general funds, and then eventually, when we do get the money, we could then decide what, you know, how much to go to where?
It could. And that's what I was trying to say. If we designated all as salary replacement, which we would be able to do that, and then at a later date, we say, the water and sewer fund needs some help, let's adjust either how we do our fund needs some help, let's adjust either how we do our payment, bill of taxes transfer, or adjust how much we have them transfer into technology services fund, or those kind of things. There's ways to move those levers around with the budget.
Okay, so, there's no problem if we just decide that if our direction is to just go through to the general fund, and then ultimately later on during the budget session, then start determining what areas really need assistance?
When we receive, when we accept the funds.
Absolutely. And Council, I want us to be very careful, and Councilman Rick Adeli and I had a great discussion about this today, we cannot program one-time funds for recurring costs, it is, you build in a structural deficit, anytime you have a recurring cost that you start funding with one-time funds, we end up in a scenario that we end up building ourselves a future deficit, so anything we spend this on needs to be a one-time cost.
Got you. Okay, everybody understand? I think we need to move on.
Oh, yes.
And Councilman Williams?
I just want to echo, or throw in my support for flexibility, I don't think we're facing quite as much uncertainty as we were two years ago today, but still quite a bit of uncertainty, and think it could change rapidly within a couple of months.
So is everybody okay with the general fund proposal until we accept the funds and receive them?
So Mayor and Council, just to make sure we're clear, we're going to accept all of them towards the general fund, we're going to apply them towards salaries, and it's public safety salaries, and that gives us the ability then...
And non-recurring type expenses.
We're, when we get to that point...
Yeah, we'll need to discuss that.
We'll get there, but we're going to apply those to public safety salaries.
All right.
Got it, thank you.
Thanks. Moving on to item seven, consent and regular agenda, is there any item Councilmember would like to remove? I will say that staff has requested item O to be pooled, pulled for future meeting, anything Next item, any items for discussion, action, and for future agendas? All right. We'll move on to the regular meeting. We'll take a five-minute break and start at 7:10. ... that the Plano City Council has reconvened in open session, that all members are present, with the exception of Councilmember Grady and Councilmember Homer. We will begin tonight's regular meeting with the invocation led by Pastor Ashish Matthew with Commission Church, and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge, led by the Plano Fire Rescue Explorer Post 215. Would you please rise?
Let's pray, Father God, we thank you so much for this wonderful evening, as we come into your presence today, we want to remember your goodness, your mercy, and your love. Thank you for your eyes that are always upon this city, and your presence that's always upon this city, God. I pray today, God, for each and every person in this room, I pray, God, for our city, I thank you, Lord, for the people that you have given us, that are over us, the elected servants and the leaders that are, that day after day, do everything in their power to make sure that our city runs the way it should. Father, we pray for Mayor John Munn's, for Mayor Protem Casey Prin's, for Deputy Mayor Protem Maria Too, for council members Anthony Rick Adeli, Rick Grady, Shelby Williams, Julie Homer, and Rick Smith. Father, we thank you, Lord, for our wonderful council members, the wonderful elected members of this city, that, Lord, you have put in places, God, to make decisions, that do things, God, for the benefit of this city, and for the benefit of the greater good of the citizens of this beautiful, beautiful city. I ask, God, that you will be with them today and in the years to come for their elected periods, I pray for their family members, I pray for each and every employee of this city, each and every servant leader in this city, I pray, God, that you will give them wisdom from heaven in everything that they do. I pray, God, that they will be a beacon of hope in this city, that the decisions they make, I pray, God, will be decisions that are made out of wisdom, decisions that are guided by knowledge, and I pray, God, that they are well-founded in everything that they do, I pray, God, that they will seek counsel, not just, God, with one another, and using their own wisdom, but I pray, God, that they will lean in on you. We give you praise, we give you glory, we thank you, God, for this day and every single thing that we are going to be discussing and talking about. We give you praise, we give you glory, thank you, God, for what you're going to do, thank you for what you've done in this city, and I pray, God, that as people of God, we will come together and humble ourselves, and we pray, God, for your name to be lifted up. We give you praise, we give you glory, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Please stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the Texas Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor to the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you Pastor Matthew for leading the invocation, thank you Plano Fire Rescue Explorer Post 215 for leading the pledges, can't thank you enough. First item is comments of public interest?
Comments of public interest, this portion of the meeting is to allow up to three minutes per speaker, the 30 total minutes on items of interest or concern, and not on items that are on the current agenda. The council may not discuss these items, but may respond with factual or policy information. The council may choose to place the item on a future agenda. And we do have some speakers this evening, the first one is Alex Stein.
Hello, Council, my name's Primetime99 Alex Stein, and I have a little presentation for you today, I have a little audio company, but I just want to, I want to take a moment to think about the people of Ukraine and what they're going through, so I've prepared a little song for them, let me turn this on, I really want to try to help the people out there, okay, guys? So, let me just get it going, they call me Primetime99 Alex Stein, I hope you guys like my flavor. Come on. Primetime99, on the grind, all the time, go insane for Ukraine, a bullet in Putin's brain, I'm primetime, always on the grind, always got to shine, and you know it's no lie. What, oh, excuse me, come on, audio, where are we going, now we're going, now we're cooking, guys, I got it turned down a little bit. It's primetime, let's start that one more time, guys, come on in the audience, listen to my heart tonight, it's primetime, officer, you know I'm on the grind, you know, gas prices are way too high, Putin's got to die, put a bullet in Putin's head, yeah, that's what I said, I'm a freak for the vaccine, vaccinate my body, at the party, sipping Bacardi, I'm the proof, when I'm in the booth, spitting on the mic, Putin's anti-vax, Putin hates all of them blacks, Putin is a bad racist, put him in the ground, white or brown, and I'm in Plano town, and you know you just got found, I'm a pimp, on a blimp, in lots of steak and shrimp, no you can't stop my shine, I'm number 99, and you know I grind and shine, and you know I do it all the time, one more time, I'm teaching class, this is your whole class, Zelensky is a VIP, Ukraine and I go insane, put a bullet in Putin's brain, you know that is the plan, I'm a Zelensky stan, I love you, Vladimir Zelensky, you are so smart, what's that smell, did somebody fart? No way, what can you say, vaccinate me straight again, I love you, and I love to grind and grind all the time, and you got that sanitizer, and you know I got that Pfizer, you know I stick it in my vein, put a bullet in Putin's brain, do it for the Ukraine, before I go insane, let me antibacterial my body, at the party, sipping Bacardi, you know the flow, and I am a pimp, 'cause I am on a blimp, in lots of steak and shrimp, one more time, I'm 99, and you know I grind and shine, gas prices way too high, Vladimir Putin needs to die, gas prices way too high, Vladimir needs to die, I'm the truth in the booth, take my picture, I'm a winner, I'mma eat you for dinner, okay. I just want to say, I love you, we need to take out Vladimir Putin, like Lindsey Graham said, thank you, Mayor Munn's, I appreciate the time, peace, God bless you all. Primetime Stein on Instagram, thank you.
We got you down, we got you down.
The next, the next, the next speaker is Brian Wellington.
It's good, my time start now? All right, bet, so what up, my name Brian, I'm white, though, and, man, y'all look cozy in here, man, I need a job up in here, because y'all look like you don't do nothing all day, I'm trying to vibe with y'all and stuff, but, yeah, can y'all smoke weed with the city council? Because I'm trying to get on this, if I could smoke weed, I was trying to join up in the military and stuff for World War III, but I had got kicked out of the debt program with the Army, because I had failed the drug test, so we need to do something about that, because I'm trying to do that, you know what I'm saying, I've been like working out, I wake up and do pushups in the morning and stuff, I do like 50 pushups and stuff, and I've been like getting buffed, but yeah, what I was finna say was, I did vote for Biden, so I get, and I've been getting a lot of hate from people and stuff, but, you know what I'm saying, the reason I did was because he said I ain't gonna be black if I don't vote for him, so I had to stay in that realm, you know what I'm saying, I had to vote for Joe Biden, but, I got this little poem here I wrote, because y'all be getting me messed up on this child support stuff, because I got kids, I had to show Dallas, too, and I'm on house arrest, y'all see the ankle? I'm on house arrest, yeah, kids, too, I got all this child support to pay, I can't do nothing, too, I've been trying to explain this, you know what I'm saying, I've been getting lawyers and all this stuff out here, but they ain't doing nothing for me, all these kids, it's my wallet, you feel, it's my wallet. Imagine that, imagine how much child support that is, I can't even go out to the nightclub because they ain't got daycare up in there, so like, what am I doing, you feel? You feel me? I can't do nothing. I can't join up in the military. But, yeah, this is my poem I wrote. It says, "They trying to make me pay this child support or they gonna lock me up. But I gotta buy them new Jordans and stop my life in the fast lane. I'm Jeff Gordon. New Gucci belt, I'm flexing. You better be recording. I do it for the gram because I'm important. I'm like Barack Obama because we both white. And everyone who disagree ain't right. Y'all can keep hating on a pimp. It's all right. I'mma eat y'all up like the Florida Gators. Female out here trying to steal all my racks. I fell for the trap because shorty was looking like a snack. They just want to take my money and that's a fact. I'm a deadbeat dad and I don't take that back. Just trying to get my paper so throw me a stack. I'mma be the best rapper alive and make platinum tracks. I'mma be just like Eminem, Dre. That's facts. Deadbeat dad for life, like someone gonna get me my plaque." And I'mma say this, I can't wait for the New World Order. You know what I'm saying? The Great Reset because they gonna take my kids. I ain't gonna have nothing, no responsibilities. I mean, there's too much responsibility. I can't wait. Klock Schwab, shout out to the Great Reset World Economic Forum. Take my kids. Take my kids. Klock Schwab, you feeling Schwab 2030? Own nothing, be happy. I can't wait for that. Represent your little Bay Area opening. Shout out, white man attendant. Follow me on Instagram.
Thank, thank you.
My mom is an influencer.
Thank you.
All right, good. Appreciate y'all.
The next speaker is Sharon Overall.
Babies exposed to secondhand smoke in the womb or after birth grow up with weaker lungs than babies that are not exposed to secondhand smoke. This is what I live with every day. I am more susceptible to colds and infections. A small amount of cigarette smoke makes the bridge of my nose immediately throb. This is the allergic reaction. If the smokes gets in my throat, I immediately start coughing and hacking, trying to get out the small particulate matter in the smoke. If a large enough cloud gets into my lungs, then I get a bronchial infection. And since smoke travels over 100 feet, it is next impossible to not be exposed at one time or another. I am not alone. Asthmatics are immediately affected even with small amounts, and I have to carry inhalers with them. Per the CDC, even brief exposure to secondhand smoke can be harmful to your heart and blood vessels. Exposure to secondhand smoke, even for a short time, can be harmful to both children and adults. I always wonder why smokers expose others. The other day, as I was going into Home Depot in Ohio, I was engulfed in a huge cloud of cigarette smoke. I turned and saw the smoker under the arbor about 30 feet from the door. It was a cold morning. So why did he get out of his truck and walk across the parking lot to smoke? Why not smoke in his truck where it was warm? A few days later, I was at Kruger and a smoker was smoking near the building. He was 50 feet from the door. But again, why did he get out of his car and walk to the building to smoke? Why do smokers dangle the cigarette out of the window of their car? Is it because they don't want the secondhand smoke either? Why should they be able to expose others to something they don't want themselves? If you are in a car behind a smoker who has a cigarette dangling at the window and they are exhaling the smoke out of the window, then you're getting more of the smoke than the actual smoker, especially if the wind is blowing in your direction. Make them roll up the window and keep it to themselves. I believe that the smoker knows that the secondhand smoke is as deadly as or deadlier than firsthand smoke, and they don't want any more exposure to it than necessary. They just need their fix. So they try to keep it away from themselves. They do not care if they're exposing others to their choice. They do not respect the rights of the non-smokers to not be exposed. We need an ordinance that states the non-consensual exposure to secondhand smoke and the uninvited presence of secondhand smoke shall constitute a nuisance, is prohibited, and is made unlawful. Smoking shall be banned on all public property, including streets, sidewalks, parks, and public buildings. Smoking shall be banned on private property open to the general public. Exceptions would be clearly marked designated smoking areas on private property open to the public where smoke is contained to the area marked and does not expose persons in areas open to the general public to secondhand smoke. And private residential property prohibited the smoke is contained and does not enter neighboring properties. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jeremy Matthews.
Evening, council. Good to see you all. And what I, first thing I wanted to, oh, I'm Jeremy Matthews. I live in Plano and it's 75025. I mentioned my zip code because that'll be relevant in a few minutes. First, I wanted to just thank you guys for having the Plano Listening Tour. I participated in one of those. It was supposed to be at the Plano Y, but it turned out it was an icy day. And Councilman Riccadelli was there and City Manager Israelson, and I guess you made them all. But so one of the things, and it was done well, I thought, even though we couldn't make it in person, you did it on Zoom and went without a hitch, I thought. So it was really good. So one of the things that hap, well, we had our breakout sessions in the Plano Listening Tour. And one thing I brought up that didn't make the larger thing was, and I've brought this up before in a different forum, was our election system for Plano City Council. And this doesn't reflect on any council person here, but I think, you know, it's an at-large, it's mostly an at-large voting system. And I think we ought to be moving more to a single district voting system for council members. I'd mainly because that'll just get more equitable distribution. And is the overhead working? Okay. Okay, so I did a little, I don't know if it's readable. Well, anyway, I did a little bit of research, just some numbers on the representation of city council members on Plano City Council. And I did it kind of by, I looked at the, you know, population of Plano and broke it down by zip codes. It was just sort of an easy way of doing it. Found that online. And I've got copies of these tables if you guys, you know, can pass out. And so what I noticed was that, you know, we've got zip codes 75023, 2425, 75074, 75, and 93 in Plano. And the representation on city council is we've got 2 in 75023, 1 in 24, 2 in 25, 0 in 74, which is all of East Plano. So there's nobody living in East Plano that's east of 75 that's on city council. That's kind of amazing. Also, 75075, there's nobody on city council from there. 75093, there's three people on city council. So it's getting more than its fair share of representation. Now, I'm not saying that every position should be, I'm sorry, you know, at large. I think the mayors, you know, should certainly be at large. But so anyway, I just think we ought to be moving towards more, you know, single-member districts because when it's all at large, you know, you can get people who have more resources. Is it time? No, okay. Anyway, I just want to say we should go to a more single-member district system. And I've left some charts with percentages and stuff, so.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. I wanted to just let you know that we actually have a hybrid system in Plano. So while all council members are elected at large, so every citizen can elect every council member. We do have the four residency requirements, as you mentioned. So four positions do have residency requirements. And it does turn out that District 1 did have our Deputy Mayor Pro Tem, actually living in 75074 when she was elected, has moved, still within District 1, but was in 75074 when she was elected the first time in that. So just as a point of clarification, I just wanted to make sure that we have that out there for the citizens.
Yeah, I mean, just one point, I'm just like, and I understand that. But I like, and I'll show you, show you these tables, but there's, you know, in 75074, 75075, that comprises about 31% of the city's population. And there's nobody from those zip codes sitting on council. I mean, that's almost a third of the city, and there's nobody from those, you know, on city council. I think, you know, we've got a city of excellence, and I think we should have a better and excellent system of electing city council members.
And one last thing that our city attorney reminded me, that any change to, any change to those requirements would be, have to be a charter election by the citizens in order to amend the city charter.
Okay.
So just letting you know.
Okay. All right. Well, something we should think about and, and after your terms. Yeah, once you guys fill out your full terms.
Thanks, Mr. Matthews.
The next speaker is Tom Sotaro.
Mr. Sotaro, could you, you see the mic? It was knocked. There you go. Thank you. All right, go ahead.
Okay. Hi, my name is Tom Sotaro. I live at 6020 Garden Gate Drive, Plano, Texas, 75024. Here to kind of talk to council members about potentially getting a no parking sign on my block for multiple reasons. I don't know if you can see or hear from the video. I have a kind of a printout of the street. I'm only asking for a certain section of the block. I think previously the neighbors asked for no parking down the entire block, which goes from Windhaven all the way to Sleepy Spring. And then it was either voted down or it was denied. I'm just asking for the section that goes between Yellow Flower Way to Lazy Oak Lawn, Lazy Oak Lane. The reason for this is that Windhaven has, it's kind of like a cul-de-sac, the way it leads into our area. This side doesn't have a turn-in, but this side does. And so most of the traffic that's returning from Windhaven will go to where the entrance or turn is and then come up Garden Gate Drive. So that's where all of the volume of traffic is coming. My house is the house that is situated here at the turn of Lazy Oak Lane. There is a lot of parking on both sides of the street, which are, which prevents traffic from getting through. It prevents delivery trucks from making turns. It prevents school buses from making turns. As I said previously, my next-door neighbors had requested the entire block, and that was shut down. And my understanding was the people past Lazy Oak Lane didn't feel it was necessary. But the folks in front of me and beside me do feel it's necessary. Here is a picture of some of the parking that goes on, on the street. I don't see anything coming up on video here.
Yeah. We can, we'll, we'll get, we'll get those.
Okay.
Documents, if you don't mind.
Okay, so, so my neighbor across the street, his name is JJ. He owns a tow truck business, a luxury car rental business, an auto repair, and flip used car business and a pool service business. He runs those businesses out of his home. He also has a location up in Denton. But a lot of times, he does his auto repair and he flips his used cars right there in Garden Gate in Plano. And so because of that, there's cars and trucks on the block, three months, four months, five months. They don't move. I asked him to move the cars or the vehicles. It makes it difficult for, as I said, school buses to turn, difficult for me to get out of my driveway. He basically flipped me off. Soon after that, I kind of was walking my dog. He approached me. He threatened me. And then shortly after, my tires were slashed on my car, which I have a police, copy of the police record here that's going, getting filed. So finally, on 228, am I over time?
Take 30 more seconds. Go ahead.
Thank you. So finally, on 228, I put a new camera up and I captured images of the school bus trying to navigate the turn. It could not navigate the turn. It almost hit the fire hydrant. The driver had to get out of the vehicle and check and back up and do a K-turn. And he had to get out of the school bus three times, or two times, excuse me, make three attempts to make the turn. I finally sent that in. This was my, I counted it, 40-second email into the Fix It and Plano Group. Then walking my dog, again, JJ approached me. He said a lieutenant from the police department called him. If I ever fucking do that again, sorry, that would be in verbatim, I would get my ass kicked. And, but the cars did disappear. That lasted about a week. And then he started doing car repairs again. And there's vehicles, this picture's not too good, but there's an Escalade parked right off the corner again.
Mr. Sotaro, do we, I think you filled out a registration form. We will have our staff reach out to you tomorrow with our Neighborhood Services, possibly our police department. We'll work through that with you tomorrow. But thank you very much for letting us know.
Right. Mark, can I leave this?
Yeah.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Our last speaker is Jose Martinez.
Hola, como están? Si, este, este, mi nombre es Jose. Si, este, este, I want to start this, this, this thing, just to thank you for, este, listening to me. Este, este, I stay right there, este, in the Jupiter and in the East Park. Si, aquí, al lado, si. El razon es, es porque I come over here, es, este, el, el gas price, el gas price. Este, I just got my USA CDC and I speak English forever. Y, one of the things is, este, you know, you know, the gas is a disgrace to the, to the, to the community essentials and the workings. He, like myself, I be going back and forth to Mexico, you know, and I just do distribute the, the, the products. You know? Don't get me wrong, señores. I, I, there's no, este, there's no, este, you know, you know, trafficking, nothing. I, I, I do everything successfully. You know? Don't give me my papeles. Y, I love my city, the, the Plano, si? Me tiene? Y, este, you know, I distribute the productions in my VA Mamalona. And I don't, I, I, I don't worry, you know? I, I, I love to go and, and, and come back. Pero the grass, the gas prices is insane. Si. No me gusta. You know, otras cosas, si, este, you know, I just, I just want to see when the crazy apocalypse of everything is, is, is gonna be over, you know? Okay, one of the things is, este, you know, we, we need, you know, more Hispanic, I'm trying to, to, to expand the Hispanic, the, the, the community in the Plano. Si, porque los otros, we, we're very hardworking people. We need more, 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 este, jal, jal, work, you know? Y otras cosas, we need more food like Taco Bell around the corner. Porque, you know, I'm tired of eating the, the, los tacos de, del paisano. I don't want to eat no more of that. We need more Taco Bells in our city. And, and, like she say, you know, she says, she says the smoking, I don't like that. I don't, she's right about that. And the smoking is stinky. No me gusta. Ese, ese de la mota, no, no me gusta. We need to fix it.
Okay.
We need to fix it, por favor.
Thank you.
Listen to me. Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Si.
Appreciate it. Moving on to the consent agenda.
The consent agenda. The consent agenda will be acted upon in one motion and contains items which are routine and typically non-controversial. Items may be removed from this agenda for individual discussion by a council member, the city manager, or any citizen. The residing officer will establish time limits based upon the number of speaker requests.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Should that be other than item O?
Minus item O.
I'll second that.
Yeah. Okay, I have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda. We've already removed item O, so it would not include item an O, but being that it's in the motion, please vote. Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. Next item.
Public hearing items. Applicants are limited to 15 minutes presentation time with a five-minute rebuttal if needed. Remaining speakers are limited to 30 total minutes of testimony time with three minutes assigned per speaker. The presiding officer may amend these times as deemed necessary. Non-public hearing items. Presiding officer will permit public comment for items on the agenda not posted for a public hearing. The presiding officer will establish time limits based upon the number of speaker requests, the length of the agenda, and to ensure meeting efficiency, and may include a cumulative timeless limit. Speakers will be called in the order the cards are received until the cumulative time is exhausted. Item number one, public hearing and consideration of an ordinance as requested in zoning case 2021-28 to amend the comprehensive zoning ordinance of the city, ordinance number 2015-5-2 as heretofore amended, granting specific use permit number 47 for Arcade on Point One acre of land located 88 feet north of Highway 190 and 920 feet east of Coit Road in the city of Plano, Collin County, Texas, presently zoned corridor commercial, directing a change accordingly in the official zoning map of the city, providing a penalty clause, a repealer clause, a savings clause, a severability clause, a publication clause, and an effective date.
Hello again, mayor and council. I'm Christina Day, Director of Planning. This item was submitted under the interim comprehensive plan. It is a request for a specific use permit and is located at Coit and the George Bush Turnpike. The property is zoned corridor commercial and is surrounded by corridor commercial zoning on all sides. The property does face the Highway 190 Frontage Road and does also have a couple of specific use permits in the vicinity. Both are for private clubs. The property is a lease space. It is just over 5,600 square feet. It is located within a shopping center. The photograph shows the location of the request on the existing site. This is a photo of the future land use map within the comprehensive plan. The area is designated major corridor development. There's also part of the mixed-use policy statement that references major corridor development. Although the comprehensive plan does not reference this use Arcade specifically, it is consistent with the uses within major corridor development. There are use separations within the zoning ordinance required for uses within the city of Plano, and this request meets all the requirements for use separations for Arcade. We did receive one response in support for this request. This is the location of the response. There were no responses within the property itself or within the 200-foot buffer, as indicated by the numbers in the table. So, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of this request by a vote of eight to zero, and I'm available for questions you might have on this case. There is a presentation from the applicant as well.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Thanks. I'll open the public hearing.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Luke Franz, or council member two, it's Stephen. I am at 2323 Ross Avenue in Dallas, Texas. I represent the applicant in this case, Belong Gaming Arenas. We believe it's a simple SEP request, but because it's a newer concept, we want to provide you a short presentation to give some context and background. So, the Belong concept is the idea of a physical entertainment venue where patrons can come to watch, play, and compete in gaming, esports and video games. This concept was started in the UK in 2016 and came to the US in 2020. There are a bunch of locations, and there's actually one in DFW in Grapevine, and it's seen great success so far. And part of that success is due to the demand for gaming esports in this industry. With 2.7 million gamers worldwide, this industry has grown to be eight times larger than the music industry and four times larger than the film industry. And in fact, in 2019, the League of Legends World Esports Tournament had double the amount of viewers than the Super Bowl that year. So, the demand is high, and we believe this is, Planos is a great location for this. I want to provide you some pictures of what the concept inside looks like. As you can see, it's gaming consoles, individual gaming consoles, like computer screens or gaming screens. These arenas have the top games, the best games, the newest ones, with all the consoles as well. There's a small portion of the arena dedicated to a small retail space so that you can buy the latest and greatest games or consoles. Here's just a layout of what this location would look like, about 60 consoles in total. As Ms. Day stated, it's at the, it's at the Market Plaza Development at Coit and George Bush. And the location is prime and a great location, just because, not just because of the highway access, but also because of the proximity to UTD. I wanted to provide you some context in the actual Market Plaza. It's in that corner where it's pointing to. And again, we're here for questions. We have someone from the team here as well. I'm happy to answer questions as well.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant?
I do. Thank you, Stephen.
Of course.
So, Luke, I have a few questions because I believe that this type of facility is absolutely great for Plano because we're supposed to live, work, and play in Plano, and young people really do need a place where they can gather and, you know, and find each other. But I do have a couple of concerns that I wanted to ask you. I don't know whether or not you can address it, but one of them is, is there any type of curfew that's set up in, in your facility in the future when you build? Some of the other things that usually happens when young people get together is they, they have a tendency to get, you know, too involved and too focused in their games, and sometimes it leads to more physical altercation. So, have you thought about, what are some of the preventative strategies that would go into building your, your facility?
Yeah, absolutely. So, some background on this, because it's one of, you know, many in the US and the UK as well, there hasn't been a rise in violence in any, any form or fashion. It's more of a, put your headphones in and focus on the game, and people can talk and talk to each other, but like, they're gonna talk to the president next to them, but they're talking through the screen. And so, it's less physical, it's very much in the virtual world. As far as hours-wise, we expect it to open between noon and, between noon and 3:00 PM, depending on the day, and then close between 9:00 and 10:00 PM in the evenings. There are a few instances where there'd be large tournaments, and those would have little later hours. There are full-time employees at this location, and parental, parental guidance is required for children under the age of 12, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Rick Adelman.
Thank you, mayor. Well, Mr. Franz, Stephen, thank you for that presentation. And I was wondering, you mentioned other locations of Belong. Is it generally your experience that you're required to get a specific use permit when you open a location? Or I was curious, how are Arcade ordinance compares to other cities?
That's a great question, and that was something we had talked with planning staff about, because it is, it's not the typical Arcade you normally envision. I think that it doesn't fit exactly with the way the ordinance is written, but we're happy to go through the process. The majority of locations are by right. Whether they are by right because of the zoning, base zoning ordinance in those cities allow it, or the prior operator was a Dave and Buster's, something like that, which had that kind of SUP, which ran with the land, but the majority of them have been by right based on the zoning districts.
Thank you for that information and for coming to Plano.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have any speakers?
We have no speakers on this item.
All right. Seeing none, I'll close the item, confine the comments to the council. Motion to approve. Second. Thank you. I have a motion, a second, to approve agenda item number one. Please vote. Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. Next item.
On this. Item number two, public hearing and consideration of an ordinance as requested in zoning case number 2021-29 to repeal ordinance 97-5-15 in its entirety to rescind specific use permit 322 for Arcade on Point One acre of land and grant specific use permit number 25 for continuing care facility on four acres of land located on the northeast corner of Central Parkway and Hager Street in the city of Plano, Collin County, Texas, presently zoned planned development 41 corridor commercial with specific use permit number 322 for Arcade. And with such actions amending the comprehensive zoning ordinance of the city, ordinance number 2015-5-2 as heretofore amended, to reflect such actions, directing a change accordingly in the official zoning map of the city, providing a penalty clause, a repealer clause, a savings clause, a severability clause, a publication clause, and an effective date.
Right. Zoning case number 29 is actually the first item that you'll hear submitted under the new 2021 comprehensive plan. So, this case is located near the intersection of US Highway 75 and Park Boulevard. It is south and east of that major intersection. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit for continuing care facility, which is defined as housing and accommodations and services for an elderly person's needs, including independent living, assisted living, and/or long-term care facilities. However, due to the comprehensive plan, this request specifically is excluding independent living portion of those facilities, and that was never the intent of this specific operator, so it works within their, their operations. The applicant is also requesting to rescind a Arcade SUP that exists on the site today that is no longer in use. The facility is also requesting to be limited to 163 beds, and there are 162 rooms on the site. This is an aerial photograph of the site as it exists today. It's highlighted in yellow and is currently being used as a hotel. The surrounding land uses are commercial property, including hotels, offices, and restaurants. So, this is a graphic of the site plan that was submitted and considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission. It has been enhanced. It includes a blue line that indicates the 260-foot setback from the eastern property line that helps restrict the living units from the environmental health area that's part of the comprehensive plan. The colored area that is actually part of the architectural drawing submitted by the applicant shows the tower portion of the building as it exists today. So, the purple portion are the individual bedrooms, if you will, that would be part of that tower or exist as part of the tower today. And so, that is the location of living quarters. The remainder of the building is a one-story building, as it would remain and would be, again, outside of the environmental health area on the comprehensive plan. So, regarding conformance with the comprehensive plan, the subject property is designated as downtown corridors on the future land use map. This is intended to create an attractive gateway and support continued transformation of the historic downtown Plano area, which is the civic and cultural heart of the community. So, due to the property's existing use as a hotel, it is designated as retail in our land use and housing inventory. So, what does this mean for the land use mix in the comprehensive plan? Well, it is currently shown as a land use type. It would be removed from the retail type in the employment mix and moved to institutional type. So, that would be a change of 0.7% from retail and an increase of 0.7% in institutional, should this SUP be approved. There's no net change to housing types. So, how does this impact other city policies? It is supported by the special needs housing policy and the housing trends analysis by adding to the retirement housing stock in the community, as well as the expressway corridor environmental health goal by keeping housing outside of that blue buffer that you can see on the plan. And that setback that's the blue line, this is another indication with the aerial of how the policy statement, the restriction on the SUP, will keep units outside of that environmental health goal boundary. So, the zoning ordinance does have a separation for retirement housing based on the building height from residential zoning districts. And that is a, because this building is three stories in height, there is a 150-foot setback. You can see it meets that restriction by being 242 feet from the boundary. The SUP restrictions, as proposed, are written on the screen. You see the 260-foot setback, the maximum number of beds to retain the number of beds that exist, or the number of units that exist on the site today, and the restriction on independent living, consistent with the comprehensive plan and the operator's intentions. Also, the intent to rescind the no-longer utilized and needed Arcade SUP. This was recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. We have two recommended, or two responses, both in support. No one either neutral or in opposition. It's the property owner and one other, one other respondent within the city. There's the locations on the map. So, within the area, again, the property owner is one of the respondents. There was no one in the buffer that responded to this request. So, this is the recommendation. It was a unanimous eight-to-zero response from the Planning and Zoning Commission, subject to the stipulations on the screen. And I'm available for questions, as well as the applicant is available with the presentation.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Thank you.
I'll open the public hearing. Would the applicant like to address the commission, the council?
Mayor, Council, Maxwell Fisher with Master Plan 2595, Dallas Parkway, Frisco, Texas, 75034, representing MNN, Senior Health. So, with all the migration of people moving here, employers and people, there's obviously a huge housing shortage. In addition to that, our population's aging, and we have a huge shortage for senior housing needs. And so, we're hoping to be a small, play a small part in that by an adaptive reuse of a Comfort Inn. It is an adaptive reuse, interior remodel, 162 units. We'd have 118 assisted living and 44 memory care units. We'd have 118 assisted living and 44 memory care units. It would be market rate, and the living portion would be in the six-story tower on the eastern portion of the property. Because this is an older hotel with a lot of common areas, it actually works really well with our concept in that we can provide a ton of amenities for our residents. So we'll have kitchen, juice bar, library, theater, art studio, wellness center, hair salon, activity space, nurse station, and the outdoor patio, which has a pool, would actually be converted. We'll remove the pool because people will be living here, it wouldn't be safe to have a pool, but we'll convert that to a nice space that creates a nice leisure area for our residents. Here's some interior photos of a location of the current developer, owner of a property in Clinton Township in Michigan, so they're looking forward to coming into this market. There's restroom and private bathrooms in all the units. As mentioned by staff, it's in the downtown corridor, and understanding that the land use, there's, it aligns with the plan, and that allows this type of land use in the downtown corridor, would be adaptive reuse, and it would also align with your comp plan in supporting senior citizens and people with special needs and having enough housing for those people. As mentioned, there is an environmental health corridor, as you guys are all familiar with, that was done, and we wanted to make sure that our residential component was outside of that area. So we've done that by demonstrating it's to the east, and we are fine with the restriction in the SUP that would limit the residential portion to the east side. We're also doing some improvements on the outside. We would be preserving crape myrtle trees, and on the property, we'd also convert quite a bit of parking along our central parkway to add about 2,300 square feet of landscape area, along with adding several shumart oak, live oak trees and cedar elm, which would just help with the aesthetics and hopefully be an impetus for future redevelopment of some of the struggling properties in this area. Elevations of the property, of the building, we'd be painting the non-stone portions of the building, freshen it, give it a nice look. Neighborhood outreach, we reached out to about 50 homeowners to the east of us. We included James Russell, the barber. He seems to be the guy in the know and knows everybody. He helped us and appreciates this proposal. We held a February 16 meeting at the actual hotel. We had three people in support at that meeting. We also reached out to Haggard Property Group, just as a courtesy, since they have an office next door, let them know what we're planning to do. And then we also met with Councilwoman Holmer at the site, who was also excited about bringing this facility available for seniors. I'll wrap up by asking for council to approve the request. It's a reuse of an underperforming hotel. It's a meeting housing need as called for in your comp plan. We're going to be making significant improvements to the property, and we ask the council, we hope not to be only the first application to be heard under the new comp plan, but the first one to be heard and approved under the comp plan. So, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any speakers?
There are no speakers on this item.
Seeing no speakers, I'll close the item. Confine the comments to the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion, a second, to approve agenda item number two. Please vote. Motion passes six to zero. Thank you.
Next item.
Item number three, consideration to approve RFB number 2022-241-B for Shiloh Road Expansion, Park Boulevard to 14th Street, project number 7036 for the Engineering Department to Texas Sterling Construction Company in the amount of $13,797,878, and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents.
Good evening. I'm Caleb Thornhill, Director of Engineering. Obviously, this is for the bid for the Shiloh Road expansion. So a little bit of background on what the actual project is. It's the expansion of Shiloh Road from 14th Street up to Park Boulevard. It'll be adding two lanes to the east side of the existing roadway, and those will be converted into northbound lanes. There you go. So the area you see in blue is the majority of that improvement. It will include a hike and bike, or I'm sorry, a bike lane on both sides of the roadway. The existing roadway will be converted to southbound. The area in pink you see on the bottom of the page is an existing Rallye Creek Tributary that crosses underneath the roadway, and the existing culvert system will be replaced with two bridges, one for the northbound and one for the southbound. Construction includes an underground storm drain system for that east side, a waterline installation, new street lights, and other items associated with construction. We will do improvements at Park Boulevard and Shiloh Road. There will be improvements all the way up to 14th Street. We are not extending beyond the limits that you see there north of Park Boulevard that we will come back to at a future date. That section, per a 1998 resolution, has to achieve an 80% traffic volume for that section of roadway before we can widen it, and we are not there yet, and we will not take volumes during construction because it could skew those numbers based on that. So we will come back at a future date, but this is for the project that you see here above. With that, I'll take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for staff, for Caleb?
One thing I did forget to mention, we are receiving funding for Collin County on the portion of this, for the 2018 bond.
Wonderful. This item is individual consideration based on just transparency, and so we just wanted to make sure everyone was aware. So if you have any questions for Caleb, or comments, or a motion, we're good.
Okay, I guess I'll take this one. Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion, a second, to approve agenda item number three. Please vote. Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. Next item.
Mayor and Council, this is a companion item to the project you just passed for Shiloh Road, which is a widening our community's been waiting on, but since they were both tied together, we needed to go ahead and have this come at the same time. So this is a companion item to the Shiloh Road expansion.
Consideration to approve an expenditure for construction materials testing professional services for Shiloh Road Expansion, Park Boulevard to 14th Street, project number 7036 in the amount of $169,665 from Frugro USA Land Incorporated for the Engineering Department, and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion, a second, to approve item number four. Any comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
There being no further business, we're adjourned.
Dispatchers, the Kyle Plush Foundation recognized Kimberly Clark for a call that involved thinking out of the box. The call actually took place a few years ago. An intoxicated accident victim called Plano 911.